Calling to order the committee of the whole meeting for Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education. Roll call, please. Here. Please rise for pledge.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We now open the floor for public comments on agenda items. If anybody is viewing at home, you can type your comments into chat. And now for presentations, we have summer school learning update from Mr. Preble.
Yeah, so we have Mr. Preble who's going to present tonight, and the presentation is also available in Spanish. And we have Ms. Carrera who's here to answer any questions. So if there are audience members who have questions regarding the presentation, please type them into the chat and I'll be able to respond to them right away. So, Mr. Preble.
First slide that needs to be here that we need to go over is just a summary of what we were planning on doing, a rationale for summer school, which was shared with you earlier in the spring, why we were doing this. We prioritize it. We also, through a survey result, realized that only 54% of our families were interested. That number actually picked up since that presentation. We got a few more, but the, we were looking at limited space in person. And we wanted to focus on the E S Y in person due to the, due to that limited space. So we piloted a platform and an online platform that a lot of flexibility. And I think that's what allowed our actual participation number to come up a little bit because families realize that with, you know, things such as sports camps opening up and especially family vacations and able to go somewhere this summer, people want to get out. But we had students that actually logged on and did some of their work, you know, eight o'clock at night, you know, when we weren't in summer school. So that was pretty cool. So that, you know, that was the original scope and I just want to leave it there and I'll get into some of the other updates as we go through. But the, the online platform that we had focused on literacy, focused on math, and also focused on Spanish literacy. It was called innovation learning. And the next slide basically just goes over what, what our model looked like. We began on month, June 7th, right after we got out of school and we concluded on Thursday, July 15th. The summer learning session was Monday through Friday from eight o'clock to 11:30 each day. We had in-person and remote options during those three and a half hours. So we focused on intervention and enrichment. So we were able to get into adaptive. So the, so the innovation learning platform allows an adaptive program for our students to meet them where they're at and, and develop a pathway for them based on assessments that they use. So like I said, they went through that with literacy, math, and Spanish. And we were also able to add summer band for a couple of weeks, which was really cool because this original slide when I presented in the spring talked about a virtual concert and we were actually able to pull off an in-person concert right here. The band was up on the stage and they sounded fabulous. It's the amount of work that was put in and the amount of learning that was put in by our band students in those two weeks was really impressive. So it was nice to see us being able to collaborate as a middle school and intermediate school and, and, you know, have that piece. So those were what we were planning on doing. The next couple of slides show what actually happened. One of the things that, you know, we talk about every single year, and this was only the second year that I was involved with the summer learning program here. But, you know, just always listening to Mr. Williford talk about this in the past was our attendance rates. Last year was incredible because I think people weren't doing anything anyway. So they, they got online and they joined us for summer schools. Our numbers are great, but we had an enrollment of 132 students, 22 of which were remote, 154 of them were in person. But the part that was quite surprising and in a positive way was our attendance rate. We averaged through the six weeks a 79% attendance rate, which was awesome because students were coming and going. We didn't have very many students who we needed to call and figure out, hey, where are you today? Most of the students that in that, you know, 21% that aren't there were out of town for a week. You know, they were doing things for that week or they, they had a camp or something. But very few students were students that were enrolled and just didn't show up or anything like that. The engagement was very high. Our highest daily rate was 87%, our lowest was 71% and most impressive was post-July 4th. We had a 76% attendance rate. That is traditionally around like 60% or less. So everybody stayed with it, including our staff, which I appreciate. So that was, that was a very positive outcome. The next slide goes into some of the results from our assessment. So what we did in our traditional summer learning program, we had a curriculum that students went through and Mr. Williford would always show their growth rates on all that. But it didn't correlate to anything that we were doing in school. So we utilized the STAR exam from Renaissance again, like we do for our benchmarks during the school year. And we had them assessed during week five. We figured week six would be too late because a lot of people might be moving on to some other things. We'd capture as many kids as we could. So basically with a comparison from their spring scores to their summer learning scores, there's not a huge difference, but the emphasis of summer learning is that we, we want to prevent that summer slide. And when you look at the growth rates here, you know, anything above zero is, is really the target. We want to either maintain or, you know, growth is a bonus. And not that the growth rate, great growth rate, I can't speak, was exceptionally high, but it was all positive. You know, the, the numbers that you see there anywhere from, from zero to, to about 1.8, I think was the highest, is a growth rate that's determined from their spring score to their summer score, amount of points divided by the number of weeks. It's, you know, it's, it's a whole thing. It's a whole algorithm, but you're not going to see these huge gains. But what we saw was not only did we not slide, we, we maintained or actually grew, which was really cool to see. And this was in literacy. The next slide is our math data. And as I'll point out in, in both these slides, we have grades two through seven in here. With first grade kindergarten, we don't have enough data to get into there. So one of the things that we're trying to look at, and I'll talk about next steps, is how we can capture some of that data with imagine, or imagine innovation learning. Oh, it is management, excuse me. Innovation learning is our, is our after-school program. Imagine learning has some data elements, but we have to get in there and, and get some PD going on so we can really learn how to utilize that end of it better. The feedback from the utilization of her from the lesson side of it was pretty good. We had some parts that were a little too difficult. We had some very engaging pieces to it. So we're working as a committee. We met last, last week, about a week and a half ago. And just to go over some of the feedback from the teachers, I'm going to continue to work with that group going forward to see how we can better utilize this program, not only for summer learning, but also throughout the school year. And then in my last slide is just next steps. Again, usually analyzing the program of Imagine Learning to figure out how we can capitalize on the most effective pieces of it. Looking very forward to the fall STAR score so that we can have a comparison from spring to summer to fall and see if there's any slide after summer school. That, that teaches us some things. We'll see what happens there. But we also want to develop summer learning curriculum. We want to get back to, you know, what is, what is a solid summer learning program look like? What does that curriculum look like? What should we be doing? How are we going to tackle what the students need? Last year, we talked about those gaps in this, in the priority standards that we didn't get to because we got sent home in March. And okay, let's capture those. Well, even though we were remote for the majority of this past year, we were still able to go through our continuum like we normally would. So where do we find the balance? Where do we really find what, what students need? And on top of that is really looking at some comprehensive summer learning options. Not all of it needs to be remedial. We need to have enrichment programs. We also need to have activity-based programs so that kids get even more engaged and there's things for them to do and learn through different types of activities. So we really want to look at what a comprehensive program could look like going forward. I did that pretty fast. If you have questions, please let me know. Yes.
First of all, thank you so much for this. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, I noticed there was a drop in the, which looked kind of, is there a reason why that score was?
We're not really sure why that is. And part of it might've just been, you know, checkout. There's some of that. But that's also an average across the entire grade level. We've had, you know, spikes and lows all over the place. But, you know, the, the nice thing to notice is that it was, you know, majority was, was positive. That negative, that's actually a negative point one. So, you know, in statistical analysis, I would call it flat. But yeah, it's still diff below the zero. And so we wonder, we, we immediately attack that like any survey we get. We could get, you know, 99 positives and we get one negative. We want to know exactly why that negative is there. We'll analyze that. We'll walk through that. I'll walk through that with the six to 18 and see what we can figure out.
The other question I had was, you had talked about the fact that about 54% of our families are not interested in summer school for whatever reason. But I also. But I also know that you guys tend to reach out to families if their child maybe summer school would be a good idea for them. Do you have any data on how many students or families that were reached out to opted for summer school?
I could mine that pretty easily. I don't have it right now, but that is something I can definitely mine and figure out because we do have, we create a roster of students and, and early on in the year, say, and, and basically it gets based on winter STAR scores. Say, okay, who are we going to put on this list of invites, even though everybody can come, but who are, who are we going to really make sure we're reaching out to? It's just me basically taking that roster and figuring out who actually attended and putting those two things together. I could probably have that for you, you know, tomorrow easily.
And I have one last question. I know in previous meetings that it's been mentioned that our kindergarteners, when they take the, I don't remember the name of that sort of assessment where they're sort of watched by the kindergarten teacher. Are, are incoming kindergarteners, is there any summer school, like getting ready for kindergarten program for them that might help to bridge that gap? I, I apologize. I didn't double check that before I asked, so.
Yeah, no, that is one of the things that we're going to be looking at because we, we don't cover our entire student base. Obviously, once our eighth graders graduate, they get absorbed into the high school programs and then those preschool kiddos. We haven't traditionally done much with, we have a jump start type program that we used in the past. We didn't have the staff to pursue that piece, but then what exactly goes into that program is something that I will be researching. I'll be asking Dr. Berger to help me out with that a little bit, just to figure out what would be best practice-based program for summer learning. But that's exactly what I'm talking about, that comprehensive summer learning option. So we can capture all those kiddos that are going to be on board with us and not only program-wise, but timing-wise. When is the best time to do this? Is it right after we get out of school? Is it right before we come back? Is it somewhere in the middle? There's a balance to all that and there's schools of thought on every single one of them. So one of the things really going to be focusing on this fall is reaching out to some of my colleagues who ran some of these programs and just seeing what they did. And it's funny because one thing that I learned in the spring coming into the summer and a couple of webinars that I was, I was visiting and things like that and viewing, a lot of people were running summer school for the first time in their districts this year. And it's like, to me, that seems like, that was like, that's odd. Doesn't everybody do it? No. So the opportunity that you allowed for us to do this was exceptional. So I want, I want to thank all of you for that opportunity and Dr. Stromalos for letting us be able to do this. So now it's okay, we have the basics down. How do we make it even better and continue to grow that every single year? I think with doing that, we'll attract more students and families. We'll also attract more staff into doing it. So I'm looking forward to that, that bit of work there. You're very welcome. Any other questions?
Thank you very much for this. This is very helpful, very interesting. Just had a question about the, the data. And when we see a, an improvement of one or 1.5 or 0.5, can you give us just an idea of what sort of scale this is?
Sure.
So scale out of five, that's really good. If it's a scale out of, you know, 100, then it's more flat.
Once I ran the, and, and this data comes from the student progress report. And, and once I ran those reports to analyze, is what I was really looking at was, okay, how do they calculate the growth rate? And basically what it comes down to is it's the amount of, so we don't usually talk about the scale score when we're talking about STAR. We're very much in the student growth percentile. From the time they took the STAR assessment in May to the time they took it in the summertime, there's not enough time that elapses to calculate a new student growth. It, it, it's there, but some, a student who is maybe consistently at the 51st student growth percentile, all of a sudden they're like at 87 or a two based on just a little fluctuation in that six-week period. So what the growth rate does was it, it's takes like a complicated set, but it's basically if you take the new scale score compared to the old scale score by the number of weeks, it's the percentage, it's the amount of scale score points or excuse me, amount of percentage per week that it goes up. So that 1.5 is there, they've showed growth at a rate of 1.5% per week. That's what that is. So it's not really out of a scale, but it's a percentage point tacked on to what you're comparing their scale score to before. Yeah, I, I was on tech support with them for a little while just to make sure I was understanding and.
So if it's one, you know, then that one is compounding every week.
Correct, correct. So essentially what it's saying is that over the course, you know, if, if I'm at a one, then by the end of two weeks, if I, if I stay on that pace, I'm going to be increasing by, by two percentage points. That's what it's, that's what it's basically saying.
I'm sorry, at, at the end of six weeks?
At, well, so what, what, at one point, like if I, if you go back to just for example, slide six on the math. So second grade was showing about a 1.2. So every week, if we stayed at that pace, they'd be increasing their score by 1.2. That's what that's saying. That's the pace that they were showing when you calculate over the six-week period. Now, will that actually happen? I mean, that's, that's trend analysis, but that's basically what this score is saying.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yes.
Saval, how did you measure attendance for the remote students?
So basically we did the same thing that we did during the school year. When they were online, we counted them as being there and we, we tracked where they were and if they stayed on for the majority of the day. If they were, so out of the three and a half hours, if they were on for two, two and a half hours and they logged off, it was still counted as being there. So that's how we did that.
Okay. And then assuming those remote students took the assessment at home, did you notice any outlier scores like we sort of did during remote learning?
I did not because I didn't quite analyze it in that way, but I could definitely do that. I could go back and pick off a roster of remote students and just look specifically at their scores and see what that is.
I was just curious.
You know, we, we noticed a lot of outliers in the fall and I think over winter and spring, because we kept paying attention to that. I know those are conversations I have with the teachers at the intermediate schools. You know, are these, are these scores skewed with, with, you know, remote students versus in-person students? Or are we seeing, you know, a student that is traditionally in the 20th percentile, all of a sudden a 95th percentile at home or vice versa? And we saw a few of those in the fall, but in winter and spring, that came down dramatically. So I, I'll look that up, but I'd be interested to see that. But if the trend continued, then I would say it probably wasn't different.
And then for the students that were in person, they were doing a mix of both instructional learning for, and also the innovation.
Correct. Correct. So if you imagine like a guided reading session, you know, there's a group of kids working with a teacher at one time and then there's other kids working independently on something. Some were working on Imagine Learning, some were working on other, other tasks in the classroom and then they would rotate through the teacher. But we did have students who were working remotely, who were working on Imagine Learning. But also we had teachers who were checking in with them, you know, just like they did with remote students throughout the school year. So there was contact time with the teacher via Google meets as well.
Okay. Just trying to make sense of whether the growth that we're seeing this summer was a result of the programming of the, the software or was it both?
Well, and I would also, I would also say that, you know, the bar graph, and if you look at the, if you look at the bar, it's, it's pretty impressive because it's, it's really from a zero to a two on that graph. So the growth is, is there. It's flat. It's not anything, you know, exponential, but it's, it's, you know, it is fun to see the lines going in a positive direction. But again, the, the second grade and when you're looking at literacy, the second grade had a, had a growth rate of 1.9. They, they were the highest achievers out of all of them, but that 1.9 is still, you know, it's still relatively flat, but it's, but it's positive. And that's what we want. We want to make sure that we're not sliding and we stay, you know, retention is the goal and then growth is, is the bonus. But that's the other part of, you know, talking with the, with the group of teachers who are working with the program and, and we're working within person. What was going on? How, how did it work and what were the benefits that we saw from it? So that's part of the analysis process.
Anything else? Concludes our presentations and next is our business agenda. We have three items for action. And one information. So the first is the administrative review of the Omnibus Boat Agenda. This re, this resolution is being submitted for approval at the business meeting on August 17th, 2021. Items on the Omnibus Boat Agenda are considered routine and/or non-controversial and will be approved by one motion. Any one board member, staff, administrator, citizen wishes to have a separate vote on any item or items, that item or items will be pulled off on this boat agenda and voted on separately. We will, so we will vote on this at our, at the next meeting. The next item is for action and that is to approve the press 107 policies. Whereas policy creation and updates and changes to adopted policies are provided for District 76 through the subscription to Policy Reference Educational Subscription Service, press from the Illinois Association of School Boards. And whereas the policy committee reviewed the policies and a first reading of the policies was held at the July 20th, 2021 combined board meeting. Therefore, be it resolved, Diamond Lake School District 76 Board of Education moves to approve the policy changes as presented and reviewed in I A S B Press Issue 107.
You can read the numbers.
2:220-E4, 2:220-E7, 2:240, 2:240-E1, 2:240-E2, 3:30, 5:10, 6:100, 6:145, 6:160, 6:170, 6:235, 6:255, 6:267, 220, 7:230, 7:280, and 8:90. May I have a motion to approve? The next item for action is approval of substitute teacher compensation. Be resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education approves the recommendation for substitute teacher compensation as presented. And you have that, that information is in the board packet. May I have a motion to approve? Yes. Next item for action is approval of the personnel items. We have five hires and one resignation. Be it resolved, the Diamond Lake 76 Board of Education accepts and approves the personnel items as depicted on the agenda. I have a motion to approve. Yes. And that concludes our business agenda. The next item on the agenda is board discussion. In the board packet was a link for the updated CDC guidance.
Sure. In addition to that, we also added the, is the Illinois State of Education School regularly asks questions and those are just some guidance, excuse me, guidance based on what CDC has recommended. And then also a draft of our family communication that is scheduled to go out on Friday pending the discussion of this board meeting. And so as I shared with you, that CDC has pretty much shared that all K through 12 schools, or I should say, yeah, all schools, K through 12, staff, students and teachers should be wearing a mask when in person with students. And so that's pretty much what the guidance that CDC says. Illinois Department of Public Health adopted that as well as Lake County Department of Public Health and the majority of our school districts that are in the area, that the 45 that we usually, you know, collaborate with are going in that direction as well. And so as you can see from the draft of the family letter and fa, family and staff update that we'd like to send out, that, you know, we would, my recommendation, as well as with the support of the district leadership team, would to follow that guidance. So this is just an opportunity for all of you to ask questions. We are still in the process of working together as a leadership team of putting together a more specific letter to go to parents of what is that going to look like? You know, with masks on, what does that look like with lockers and hallway passing and in the classroom? At lunchtime, masks will be, you know, regardless of vaccination status, you don't have to wear them outside. So we're going to kind of just put together a detailed letter so parents have some guidelines as to what the days. as to what the day is going to look like for them at each of the buildings.
Questions? Seems, it seems like some of our neighboring districts are collecting vaccination status of students for contact tracing purposes. What are your thoughts on that? Have you discussed that?
Yeah, that's still in discussion and that's exactly what we're going to talk about next week. I think that, that is something that we're going to put out there. You know, to be congruent with what all the other neighboring districts are doing. I want to see also what forms they're collecting, whether it's something from a physician, whether it's a card. So we'll look and see, or is it just a form that they fill out with doctor's information? So we are going to be asking families to provide that.
Just to, just to preempt any other questions about how long will this be in effect? Is this something that's going to be sort of reviewed regularly as the CDC changes, Lake County changes?
Right. I think as we've said all along, obviously it's a very dynamic, ever changing situation. I mean, the first guidelines came out on January ninth, or sorry, July ninth. We met on July twentieth and that was the one direction that we sent out the letter. And then literally, you know, four days later, this comes out. So I think we just stay on top of it, stay current with it. We were thinking maybe after Labor Day reviewing them again, we'll be in school for about three weeks and seeing how that goes. And then also, like I said, consulting with our neighboring districts and see what everybody else is doing. And maybe there'll be vaccinations available for, you know, children under eleven. So that might change some things as well. Any other questions? Okay, so this got, this, I'm sorry, did you have?
No.
Okay. So this letter is going to go out on Friday to staff and families. And then, like I said, next week, we'll be working together with principals to put out something for more specific information in their back to school communications. Thank you.
And so the next item, six B, the face mask policy update is different.
We're going to get, we're going to keep that in here. And then Mrs. Hale asked if we could talk about that at the next meeting or when she returns to see, you know, if there has been any updated changes. Because this is the policy that the board adopted last spring.
Okay.
Prior to students coming back to in person learning. So we just kept it in there for your review.
And? Any other items for board discussion? We have no freedom of information requests. Next, the notices and communications. We have our board calendar that is always there. Notice earlier.
I just sent out an email from some information that came out through C D O.
Okay, that was.
I didn't put that in the board packet.
Okay, so then we now open the floor for public comments and petition on non agenda items. For those at home, if you wish to submit public comment on non agenda items, we'll give you a minute to type that in. Next item on the agenda is others. Is there any other business for the board?
Don't forget, the mask parade ball is on August sixteenth afternoon. Expect to see you all there.
It's a little, what exactly is a?
What exactly are we doing? We're just having, we're just having our luncheon, our back to school luncheon and feel free to wear a mask. Like here, because there will be no children and students in the building, so we can just wear it here. And if the board would like to come up with one of their creative themes, I am in full support of that and look forward to it. Yes. Maybe you want to reuse your kiss outfits, recycle those. Start maybe your eye ops again.
Okay, then.
And you guys all have the information, right? The dates and all that. That's all I have.
That's it. Okay. So we will now adjourn into executive session for the, the appointment employment compensation, discipline, performance or dismissal of specific employees of the district or legal counsel for the district, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employer, against legal counsel for the district to determine its validity and discussion of minutes of meetings lawfully closed, whether for purposes of approval by the body of the minutes or semi annual review of the minutes as mandated by section two dot zero six. May I have a motion to adjourn to executive session? Yes. All right. We will now move into executive session.